Called meeting in order for the Ashland Board of City Commissioners from May 13th. If you will stand, we'll ask Mike Wertz to lead us in invocation and Commissioner Goode to do our prayer.
Vice versa. Let's pray. Lo, we thank you for our city and how you blessed us in recent days. We ask and invite your Holy Spirit to enter our chambers and preside over our meeting this evening. We ask for your wisdom and guidance over this Board of Mayor Commissioners as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and in the best interest of our citizens. Bless our city manager, our staff and employees, and those in attendance this evening. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's stand and salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Goode and Mr. Wertz. All right, a motion to file and receive the agenda as presented to us.
Move.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion or changes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to receive and file the minutes for the meetings of April the first, April the eighth, April the 24th, and the April 25th recess meeting.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion or changes or deletions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll go into our Mayor Commissioners hearings and I guess I'll go ahead and start. There's, we got a lengthy agenda today, so I'll try to make it quick, but I was honored last week and several of us participated in the National Memorial Service we had in Ashland for our Police Department, and that was an excellent turnout. And I'm bringing back Walk with the Mayor. We did a press release today that's going to start on May the 24th, probably start at the area of Ashland Avenue and Hackworth, and we'll try to do those several times during the summer and get a lot of information on those. Maker's Market is scheduled for June the 14th, and Repair Fair is this coming weekend. Hope if you're able to get out there and help our community and make a positive difference. Last week, we became part of the Ohio Riverway. Commissioner Martin and I were there for their send-off here from Ashland. It goes from, the challenge they have goes from Ashland all the way to West Point Pass, Louisville. So we'll continue to be a part of that each year. All right, so let me pass it on to Commissioner Reimer.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for coming out. We have a full room tonight and it's exciting to see that. This past week's been extremely busy throughout our community. As I mentioned, the Police Memorial, we also attended the UK Kings Daughters ER in main entrance ribbon cutting, and the Mayor and I were honored to be special guests for the ACTC graduation, so that's all I've got.
Mr. Renfro.
I'll be brief, I have nothing.
Pretty brief.
Good to see everybody tonight. I want to mention one thing, we're very excited that our engineering group was able to get the wastewater treatment mandated expansion bids out on May 1st, and I think there is a meeting tomorrow of interested bidders, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I think we have a pretty good interest in it, a lot of people have downloaded the information, so that makes it better for us, too.
Just hopeful that the economy doesn't put us in bad.
I'm hoping for lower numbers. All right, Commissioner Goode.
Just welcome everybody to the night. Sorry about the temperature of the room, if I would've known it was like this, I'd have gone to Steen's and got some funeral fans. But we went, we all were there at UK Kings Daughters for their kickoff of their new addition, the entrance and the new ER, and it was a great addition, 106, over $160 million expansion to Kings Daughters, and we're thankful, they're our major employer. Like the Mayor said, Repair Fair is this Saturday. It starts at 7:30, from what I understand, and if you don't have anybody to go with, I'll team up with you, because I had a guy come up in front of my house yesterday and said, "I got high grass next to me, what are you going to do about it?" And I'm going to cut the grass, so I need help. So on Saturday, and then after I cut the grass over there in South Ashland, the South Ashland Block Party is scheduled this Saturday, May 17th, from 10 to 5, and on Sunday, the 18th, from 1 to 4. It'll cover most of the 2,000 block of 29th Street in South Ashland. South Ashland Haberdash, Till Creek Creations, Faded, South Side Square, and the Tiffany Boutique are hosting two days of sidewalk sales, guest pop-up vendors, food trucks, and more. So that's all I have, Mayor, but I would like to also close our meeting, adjourn our meeting in the memory of Ernie Pitt, our friend.
Excellent. Nine man.
Can I say one more thing? I found out this morning that the Ashland Independent School District has been recognized and awarded the National Association of Music Merchants 2025 Best Communities for Music as Education Award. Each year, the National Association of Music Educators offers a national merit award that can be applied to individual schools or an entire school district to recognize not only distinguished music programs, but also stakeholders and communities that are equally supportive and committed to creating and maintaining such high caliber of music education. This award follows an application process and is submitted back in February with the results just now being released. This is a national award, so we want to congratulate the Ashland Independent School District.
Got one more, Mayor. The Ashland Blazer graduation is May 30th.
May the 30th, that's right.
We're all invited.
Excellent, excellent. All right, Mr. Grubb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request Police Chief Todd Kelly come forward and give us a brief presentation.
Police Week is this week, it's been from 11th to the 17th, I believe, and actually, actually Police Day, or Law Enforcement Day, Peace Officer Day is May the 15th. And I would like to read a proclamation about National Police Week. And that's on Police Week of 2025, in the honor and service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty for protecting our community and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Ashland Police Department, and whereas since the first reported death in 1786, there are currently more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including six members of the Ashland Police Department. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved in the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, and whereas 345 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 148 officers killed in 2024, and 197 officers killed in the previous year. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund 37 Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2025. And whereas the candlelight vigil is part of the National Police Week, which will be observed this year from May the 11th through the 17th. And whereas May 15th is designated as a Peace Officer Memorial Day, and our fallen soldiers and officers and their families, and US flags will be flown at half-mast. And therefore, it being resolved that the City of Ashland will observe May the 11th through the 17th, 2025, at Police Week in Ashland, Kentucky, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and the communities across the nation. It is witnessed, therefore, that I hereby intend to set my hand and cause the seal of the Ashland, Kentucky, to be effect on the 13th day of May 2025. Gentlemen, we honor you today.
We'd like to add a few comments to the event today. Through the years, I've always had this proclamation read to make sure, recognize the importance of this week and what May 15th is. We've always said that there's six individuals on the wall in Washington, DC and in Richmond, Kentucky. I just want to read you something to learn and know who we're talking about, and want to remember our fallen heroes of the Ashland Police Department. The Ashland Police Department has a rich history dating back to the late 19th century, evolving from a small-town marshal's office into a modern law enforcement agency serving a community of over 20,000 residents. The department was formed on August 28, 1858, in which the first executive officer was a town marshal, and his name was John Caswell, a position that was replaced in 1900 with a police chief. This transition marked the beginning of a formal law enforcement in the area. The department has experienced significant sacrifices with six officers having died in the line of duty. And Erica will assist me in displaying some information. Our first recorded officer that's fallen, his name was at the rank of Lieutenant Conrad Frank. He was shot and killed during a raid on an illegal liquor establishment in June of 1910. Patrolman Charles West Hatfield was shot and killed while he responded to a report of an armed robbery of a hotel in March of 1919. Patrolman Doc Lefler, he was killed while arresting a suspect for assault. That occurred in July of 1921. Patrolman William Johnson died from gunshot wounds sustained while attempting to arrest a man on a drunken rampage. That occurred in July of 1923. Patrolman Lon Castle shot and killed during a traffic stop in May of 1925. And Patrolman James Lane killed in a gunfight with a suspect in October of 1937. I just want to bring to you, all those years, that is who the individuals were our heroes that we're honoring from our past, and just honoring our officers that are working every day in the past and the future. These officers' sacrifices are commemorated by the department and the community and proudly engraved forever on the walls of Courage at the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, and on the Kentucky Memorial in Richmond, Kentucky. It is extremely important to never forget these heroes from our proud past in ensuring our current and future officers and citizens to remember them for the ultimate sacrifice they made to our city. As the Mayor said, in 2024, 165 police officers were killed in the line of duty, and so far in 2025, 23. In addition to those officers who make the ultimate sacrifice, thousands more are assaulted annually. As the Mayor said, on May 15th, I encourage you to display a US flag, if you have it, at half-staff, on government buildings throughout business districts and in residential neighborhoods. By displaying the flag on Peace Officer Memorial Day, we not only honor those who have made the ultimate sacrifice, but also the men and women presently serving our community. And on May 15th in downtown, you will see all the flags displayed, and that is done by, basically, it's a national order out of the President in 1962 and later in 1993, I believe. So it's a longstanding tradition here in Ashland, we display the flags, but encouraging the neighborhoods, if you have one, to display it in memory of those. Thank you all.
I want you to know, Chief, that, and hopefully I speak for all of us and I speak for Ashland, that you know all are continued in our prayers every day, and you do a valor job in protecting our city, and I know our prayers are with you every day.
And we have the greatest officers, and I put them up against anybody in this country.
I agree.
Where, and I just want them to remember, too, who we're talking about. So that is our rich history and.
We need to continue to read those every year.
Yes. Thank you all.
All right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief Kelly.
All right, now let's move into our presentation on our conference center. We have the staff from our AP3 to make that presentation. Monica, I guess you're going to take the lead on that.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so we've been working hard to answer questions and provide information as it's been requested, and tonight's presentation is sort of a culmination of that, just sharing the information that we have been sharing to answer questions, and we have that on the screen. I think your folks at home will be able to see this as well, and so we'll just, we'll just go through it. It's not terribly long, it's more of a summary-type document. What you're seeing here is we started out answering questions about parking. Parking has been expressed as a big concern, how you're going to support not only the conference center, but other businesses in the area. So what you're looking at here is labeled Option 1, Maximum Parking on the Paramount Site. So we were asked to do a current count of available parking spaces, plus a little extra. If the total site was developed for parking only, you can see there we could get 195 parking spaces on the flat lot. And then there's other notations around the general area noting number of spaces on the adjacent streets, and then the 71 existing parking spaces that are currently along Greenup Avenue behind the hotel, if you will. And we're showing there on the corner of 14th and Winchester where the conference center might be located if it was adjacent to the Delta Hotel. This Option 1 was in response to what would this look like if the conference center was on the Delta Hotel site, we'll call it, and how many parking spaces might be available. Okay? Now if we turn the page or go to the next slide, we did the same exercise on Option 2, addressing the fact that if the conference center was built on half of the parking lot area that's adjacent to the Paramount, that also gets you a total count. And in summary, we have 297 total parking spaces available from Option 1 and 264 total parking spaces on Option 2. And these two slides were prepared on May 6th, and that date is in the lower left-hand corner, and we added dates to all of these slides to be very clear about when the information was prepared, so you know when looking at it if it was original content or content that was prepared for this evening. So just to point your attention to that. So you've got information there in front of you to answer questions very specifically about parking counts. The next page is a little bit more of a, just a line drawing, if you will. That compares the two sites visually, shows a number of parking spaces. This is a bit more of an engineered drawing, so you'll see a little, a few differences in the numbers, the 198 spaces on the Paramount site as opposed to 195 in the ballpark site. So don't let the discrepancies in the numbers alarm you necessarily. We take a big-box approach, and then we dive in a little deeper. So we're in that range. And then across the street by the Delta Hotel, we're showing a potential there of 44 spaces. Once we got in there and looked at the spacing and how it striped and such, we believe we could go from the existing number of 26 spaces, restripe that and get up to 44 spaces. So there is a possibility for some increase there. All right. So the next thing that you see there on the right-hand side, we're going to read from right to left on this slide. In previous slides, we had shown multi-story floor plans, and the third floor was usually, or the top floor was usually the one that brought about the most questions, which is addressing the need for a large ballroom or contiguous leasable space. So on the right-hand side of your page and on the screen, we're seeing an exhibit ballroom area on the top diagram representing the Paramount site labeled as 14,000 square feet. Beneath that is the hotel site conceptual layout, and we're showing an exhibit ballroom space of 5,600 square feet in the yellow. I want to point your eyes to a few things on this slide, just to show you what the information is portraying, if you'll allow me to do so for a moment. Note on the hotel site conceptual layout on the right-hand side, we are showing some dash lines and the words written Ashland Plaza Alley below. The initial concept that we had worked on for that site had the proposed conference center going over the alley by way of column supports to allow the traffic to still flow beneath it through the alley. So just want to point your eyes there, that's what that means. What we realized is that that really wasn't feasible, so the reason why that's highlighted in red there is just to point that out. There's a large bank of transformers there, electrical service, that would be very costly to move and very complicated to move, so we are suggesting that that not be done, and we're going to get into that more in just a moment. But all of these things on these drawings, the ones on the right, they're very diagrammatic. The yellow represents leasable space, the light green represents lobby areas, the dark green, which is labeled BOH, stands for back of house, and that's the utility and support areas, kitchens, massive amounts of storage, meal prepping, place for workers, all of those things that happen behind the scenes at a conference center. So that's what back of house is. We have men's and women's restrooms labeled in the blue, and then vertical circulation in the purple. And vertical circulation in a building like this requires multifaceted modes. We've got freight elevators for the staff to use to get tables and chairs and various supplies, stage platforms, musical equipment, things to serve meals with, that kind of thing, and the freight elevator. And then we've got public elevators. And then the red rectangle to the left in that light green space there is showing an escalator. And we've learned that that's the best way to move lots of people. If you've got hundreds of people attending a banquet meal and moving from floor to floor, people don't want to stand and wait on elevators. And while some people can take the stairs, most will not, especially if they're asked to traverse three floors. So planning for an escalator, so what we're showing here in the middle, you'll see the words Additional Functional Considerations with an arrow. So in the, in the planning of a building, we start out very big picture, and that's what the diagrams on the right are. They're very simple line drawings, we're brainstorming, we're looking at spaces and how they might be adjacent, and then we move to additional considerations where we get a little bit deeper into the planning. And we start allocating spaces for. And we start allocating spaces for actual toilet stalls and mechanical equipment and storage racks. We get very, very specific. And that's where we start to lay out floor plans, and you'll see those on the left-hand side of the page. Where we're identifying pre-function space or public concourse lobby in the light yellow, we've got ballroom and meeting spaces in the dark golden-yellow. Various kitchen and service areas are in the blue colors. The art concept plan has rendered itself to be possible on two floors, because there's a larger footprint area that's possible. The hotel site concept would still rely on three floors, and so we would have lobby-type function and business-admin type function on a lower floor, meeting rooms on a second floor, and then a third floor, then a ballroom. So, because the footprint is smaller. What you're seeing there on the left of the hotel site, written 14th Street, this was the recent ask of identifying how much footprint could we get if we cut into 14th Street a bit? And what that farthest-left line, right next to 14th Street, represents is the taking of the parking lane that's on the right-hand side of 14th Street. So it would leave the drive lane, it would leave the parallel parking adjacent to the church, but cut into that road somewhat. And so that's showing there what the footprint could look like. It could get a little bit more squared up, and that was an exercise to see how big it can get. You can see with your own eyes, if you read the numbers, the right-hand diagram for hotel site, our ballroom there was estimated at about 5,600 square feet. By cutting into 14th Street a bit, that meeting room or ballroom space grew to 6,550. So we were able to make the building a little bit larger by taking some of the space out of 14th Street. But nowhere comparison to the 11,000 to 12,000 square feet that we believe we can get out of the, on the Paramount Site. So these diagrams are before you for your learning and consideration. Let's turn the page. We have a furtherance of that work, where we've got those two plans simply located and labeled. Paramount Site on top, Hotel Site on the bottom. Same drawings we just looked at on the page before. And we've taken a moment to list the pros and cons for each plan. So on the pros of the Paramount Site, we can get a larger ballroom. That's easy for your eyes to see. We can get the kitchen on the same level as the ballroom. So the kitchen would be able to be on the same level where the majority of the food service work would be done. We can have service points on two sides, which makes the room divisible, and have service access on all sides. So if you're looking at that upper diagram, the golden room labeled Ballroom, the blue that wraps that to the left and the bottom, that is Back of House or Service Points. So if the ballroom is divided into two or three smaller spaces, access can still be possible for food service and whatnot to all of those spaces. There is, we have pre-function views looking out to the, it's to the top of the screen there, looking out toward the river. And then room for expansion is possible, and we have better loading dock opportunities here for this building, utilizing the same loading dock area that currently supports the Paramount. The cons, there is a bigger impact on existing parking. When we looked at those parking diagrams, you can see that if we take half of the parking lot, then you get half of the parking. That's easy to see. And there would be demolition work for the two small buildings adjacent to the Paramount with this concept at 1313 and 1322 Winchester Avenue. And if we look at the pros and cons for the hotel site, then we have less impact on parking. That goes without saying necessarily. If the 195 spaces can remain at the Paramount Site, well then, there's less impact on downtown parking. Other pros, potential meeting room views. We could get views out toward the river in this concept, because it's kind of flipped, if you will. We have a possible direct connection to the hotel, though tricky. We debated whether that was really a pro or a con. The levels are a little bit different, but theoretically, there is the ability to have connection between the two buildings. For cons, we would have just smaller rooms. It's just a smaller building, period. The kitchen would be on the lower level, not the level of the ballroom or the main meeting room area. We can only have service on one side in order to maximize the space of that room, so that's the light blue on the right-hand side of the gold room. So it limits our ability to divide the room and have it all accessible by service at the same time. There's less flexibility in a loading dock, or I'm sorry, less flexible space, right, because we can't get service to all sides. And then the loading dock situation would be very difficult because of the alley, the parking lot behind it, just access to the rear of the building. The only scenario we can think of, you would probably be blocking 14th Street in some capacity for loading. And that would require trucks that are loading, they would have to move their truck and come back. They couldn't just stay there over the course of a day or two. And parking limitations, just immediately around the area. There'd be little onsite parking, as opposed to adjacent to the Paramount Site. If we develop half of the site with a building, why then the other half would remain for parking? So, we just wanted to provide our list of pros and cons. You may think of others, and I'm sure there's many, many valid approaches to that. All right. And the last two pages, or these next two, rather, are just looking at these plans at a little bit larger scale, with some of the spaces broken out. So this is the first floor, current proposed plan for the Paramount Site, where the lobby is in the yellow areas. The light yellow areas are the access points, lobby, public circulation, general movement around the building. You'll see the word ADA below that number one with the red arrow, and that is indicating that we could have an indoor accessible entrance to the Paramount. Should you choose to do that, it is possible, whereas right now, that does not exist. And then we've got meeting rooms and service and storage and all the things that you see there, written there with your own eyes. And then this remains around 74 surface parking lot spaces, and that might be able to be maximized when we actually do the engineering work on it. All right. If we look at the next floor plan, that's the second floor, so it stacks directly above the diagram that you just saw. This enables us to get a ballroom of 11,300, and we've said in this room before, and amongst some of you and others, that we think that could get bumped up to 12,000 square feet fairly easily. Again, we're at the 30,000-foot level here, and when we really dive into the plans and work with an operator and try to check all the boxes, we believe there's a little bit of wiggle room with that number. We've got service on both sides, as previously explained, escalator, elevators, and the proper vertical service access points. And then to summarize with a few bullet points, people like to see numbers, so here they are. The Paramount Site compared with the hotel site, if we look at the total square footage, the Paramount Site, we're showing a foot, a floor plan, rather, on two floors of 5,1650. On the hotel site, we would have to accomplish that with three floors, but we could get a similar square footage number. Ballroom square footages are listed there, 11,300-plus compared to the 6,550 at a maximum. Ballroom pre-function space, which is essentially lobbies and circulatory areas, 4,000 on the Paramount and 3,300 for the hotel site. Parking spaces are labeled there. That includes all parking in the area, street parking, adjacent parking, et cetera. And then the budget cost estimates, we're looking at the Paramount Site maxing at 35 million, whereas we do believe the hotel site would be more expensive due to the space constraints connecting to the hotel, moving the utilities, and three stories instead of two, and we're looking at that at about 42 million. And that was also prepared, as you see in the lower left-hand corner, those facts were prepared for this packet that you have in front of you. Try to make it a little easier to see things side by side.
It took us a while to get there, and we appreciate your work-
It did.
And Howard and Sam on this, to get us to where we need to be. Our plan, make this presentation, we'll take in a few questions tonight, but, and maybe some, a few comments, but we're allowing, basically, a month. We will go to this, or visit this again in the first meeting of June and make our decision, and then cut you guys loose to really do the planning and designing and all that kind of stuff. But we want, as a commission, feedback from the public. I mean, that's what this commission is all about. And we want to open that up to, so this will be on our website, it'll be on Visit Ashland website, and somehow, I'm sure we make comments in there somehow, that they can do. So, and all of us, you know, we know all of you. I mean, so, you know, come to us, give us your feelings, what you feel about it, and we're going to do the best we can do to make a decision for our community to move forward on this project. And so, I mean, we have questions. We've had a lot of questions, and we've drove them crazy, and I know that. But to get where we're at, because we're doing that for you all. We're doing that for our city to make sure that when we pull the trigger on this, it's the right decision to make for our community. So with that, gentlemen, do you have questions? We've been through this so many times.
I have one, and I've mentioned it to them in advance, and I know we all have this on our mind, is the overriding concern, aside from location, is annual maintenance and operation costs? And I know that's a difficult number to deal with, but it would be a number that we would like to see some kind of a ballpark figure on, that we can put out to the public in their consideration of these two sites. And I know you had some discussion, Sam, with somebody that specializes in that area, and I've seen some of the, Monica's seen some of the numbers that you came up with before, but it would be really, really good from our standpoint, because that's what we have to be concerned with long-term, is what is the city looking at in terms of its budgetary considerations down the road? And that's a taxpayer consideration, a serious one. So if you could help us with that-
We can.
We would appreciate it.
And we can probably put those numbers out, you know, with this information too, for everyone to see.
Yeah, I want to echo those sentiments. That's my biggest concern. We have the money to build the structure, the conference center now, but how are we going to fund the operation? And that'll be something that we'll need to tackle moving forward. We get an idea of what it's going to cost, then we can look at some ways to fund the operation, whether it be through selling naming rights or something like that. I mean, that'd be something the board would have to discuss, but-
Of course.
Yeah. That's my biggest concern.
Yeah, I already have a plan for that, so I mean, that's what I've came from. I mean, those naming rights will be out there and available. So any of you all in the audience, you want the auditorium named after you? See me after this meeting, I'll fix you up. But, I mean, that's the way we'll help make this thing work. But we've, it's got to be all of us to make this decision, not just these guys up here sitting to make these decisions.
I think another thing we need to think of is, no matter the location this is built on, is we need to look at potentially demo in that Section 8 building, since it's just been sitting there. And we can demo it, and that'll add additional parking, whether it be to the 297 or to the 264.
Yes.
That's something we need to look at doing.
And we've also, I guess, we have other properties there too, on the Paramount Lot that will come down also, that will add additional parking there too. But-
And adjacent, adjacent, other possibilities, parking adjacent.
I don't think we've actually closed on that yet. We're looking to.
If you're referencing the Brooks-
I didn't want to mention.
The Brooks Wells property, the sellers have the closing documents, or they're on their way. They were overnighted yesterday, so that should be accomplished within the next couple weeks, easily, I'd say.
Right, very good. All right. So, thank you for that help, and maybe if you can be here available, we'll take a few questions, but I think most of those time that you take to digest this, get it out to the public, and we'll have probably a lot more questions. I'm sure we'll have a dialogue going back and forth, because we probably don't know all the questions. But we've asked a lot of questions, and we've asked a lot of them and Howard to facilitate for us, and I think we're getting there. I feel good about it. But like all the commissioners, we've got to make sure that we can afford this, in the future.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Absolutely. And I'll go sit in the back, and we'll listen to any comments.
Okay, so we'll actually move to our public participation, and trying to move it along. We will restrict it to five minutes, but if anyone would like to address the commission, you know, please come forward and state your name and your address, and continue.
My name's Roger Hall, and you'll be shocked to know that I'm here to talk about the Paramount. I have provided some pictures of the parking lot over at the Paramount. I wish that I'd said something so we could have them up there, but what you're looking at, you each have pictures of school buses. And I was just thrilled to hear that Ashland's getting an award and recognition for their music, their music program. And I wonder how many of those children that were involved in getting that recognition had their first experience over at the Paramount? Pictures that I've, I've got two of them. It's the same day, this is in March. During the day, we had children from 13 regional schools, approximately 1,000 children, were here for the Lightning Thief over at the Paramount. There, I counted 29 buses. I may have missed some, but there 29 buses brought those kids in there. When we talk about what's important, I have to, I have to wonder what is more important than the kind of award that Ashland just got, the recognition? What's more important than that, than the kids? If we didn't have anything to do with the children, then no problem, just do whatever you want to do. But that's not the situation. That is not the situation. I also noted, up there again, that little box that said Cafe. I wonder how many of the downtown restaurant owners know about that being planned to be a full-time cafe, a restaurant, a bar, down there on the street? That's not more important than being sure that we can bring children into the Paramount. It's not. And I can tell you, without fear that I'm wrong, that if that parking lot is taken away, and the way they've got it set up there, they're going into, they're going to take off the end of the Paramount. That's going to be an abandoned eyesore before much longer, and there will not be any kind of art situation going on over there at all. Now, you talk about money, and it's an excellent question. The Paramount this past year had, using the city, a formula, made 12 and 1/2 million for the region, 7 and 1/2 million of that directly into Ashland. Now, I'd be interested to see what the, if you take away that- Now, I'd be interested to see what the, if you take away that parking lot, excuse me, and put that building on it over there, I wonder how much that's going to bring in? If we're just looking at it dollars and cents, I know you're not, most of you grew up here. Your kids went to show over there, you went to shows over there. It's not going to be the same if we get a for-profit group in there that have to look at the money, and how much are we going to make on this? There won't be any money when they bring the shows in, and in fact, the kids that can't pay, we at the Paramount, I say we, the Paramount, covers that. There's nobody denied going over to the Paramount from schools because they can't afford it. And I, you know, I know we're talking square feet, square feet of this, square feet of that, and have a cafe and all that. What's the most important thing about this entire issue? What's number one, and how are we going to react to it? I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Any others would like to address the commission?
My name's Taylor Kruhl, last name's K-R-U-L-L, and I live at 2616 Hackworth Street. Mayor Charles and esteemed city commissioners, I am addressing y'all tonight in my capacity as Community Outreach Coordinator for Ashland Pride. On behalf of the Ashland Pride Board of Directors, I am honored to invite you to the Fifth Annual Ashland Pride Picnic, being held this Saturday, May 17th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Ashland Riverfront Park. This vibrant community gathering has become a cornerstone event for visibility, celebration, and unity in our city, and we would be deeply honored by your presence. Pride is more than just a celebration, it is a statement of love, resilience, and belonging. In light of the current political climate, Pride celebrations serve as vital expressions of unity and resilience, offering crucial visibility and support to the LGBTQ+ community, especially here in Appalachia, where tradition and progress often intersect in complex ways. Events like the Pride Picnic offer a safe, welcoming space where everyone can feel seen, valued, and supported. Your presence would send a powerful message of inclusivity and solidarity to the residents of Ashland. We would be honored to have you join us for this uplifting afternoon filled with food, music, connection, and community spirit. Thank you for your continued dedication to our city, and we hope to celebrate with you this Saturday, and I have a formal invitation.
What day was that?
This Saturday.
Oh, there's.
Saturday, 17th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Riverfront Park.
Okay, thank you. Any others like to address the commission? Yes, Mayor? You'll state your name and your address.
John Hall, 1337 Winchester Avenue. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just have a question to pose, and that is, seeing these wonderful diagrams, and thinking that the Paramount side, main ballroom, is almost twice as large as the other one. I'm just wondering, this is the question I want to pose, if that would make a difference in the revenue long-term for the number of events and the type of events that might be attracted to the city of Ashland? Thank you.
Good question. Any others? Okay, hearing none, we will continue to our old business. You have something on item A?
Yes, Mayor, I'll go ahead and read it, and then if you all could do a motion and second.
Yep.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Lights Enterprises, Inc. for the Purchase of All Labor, Materials, Equipment, and Services for the Demolition and Removal of All Debris at 1933 Central Avenue in the Amount of $9,200 for the Department of Community Economic Development to be paid from the General Fund."
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Second, discussion?
Just to give you all an update, Mr. Quade did bring in a signed copy, and I see you here, Mr. Quade, thanks for coming. He did bring in a signed copy of a contract with the purchaser for that property today. I've been in regular contact and had regular updates with the purchasers, potential purchasers' attorney, Wendell Roberts, spoke to him today, actually, and expect the purchaser to sign that later this week when he gets back from being out of town. I would request of you all, if you would please set this out to the second meeting in June, so that we can keep an eye on it, but I'm optimistic, much more optimistic now than I was before, that we will have a purchase and a demolition that does not cost the city anything.
You're asking for a motion to table this second reading until that date?
Yeah, June 2nd date.
Some move.
Second. Okay, any discussion for that table? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so it'll be June, what is the second one?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay, June 26th.
You got that, Mr. Quade? Okay, good.
All right. Let's move to a consent agenda.
A resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the City Manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of May 13th, 2025.
Some move. Second, I'd like, I have a couple of questions.
Yep, second, I've got some too, go ahead.
Could we have maybe either Barry or Mark address item B, these new water meters
Yeah, this is some of the fine work that our.
This is, this is pretty good.
Yeah, our wastewater team has come together, so.
Commissioner Martin, what this is about is, we have a water loss team that we've put together here internally. We're looking at driving that number down, the amount of water that is not generating revenue, and one of the things that we, one of the first things that we started looking at was the top twenty largest consumption meters throughout our water system. So this, this request right here is actually a request to purchase those meters, and then we would start systematically installing those.
Are they different from the meters that we have, Mr. Hall?
Just in general, it would be an upgraded, newer version of meter. Over time, meters can tend, do tend to lose their accuracy, and they don't tend to lose their accuracy in the favor of the consumer.
I guess the ultrasonic is what makes it more stable and more accurate?
Yes. So when someone, when the meter starts losing its inaccuracy, or starts losing its accuracy, it tends to, it will drive the reading down.
Is there a different method of reading these meters?
No, they will still be read the same way, depending on, we're still looking into other locations to where we can read meters more.
Accessible to the readers?
Yes, through, basically a collector where they automatically come in.
But this is the top twenty users?
Yes, yes. So if anything, if there is an impact, it should be a positive impact revenue-wise. We would fully expect some.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, nice to have a report back and after we've done this for six or seven months and.
We definitely will do that, but one thing to mention is, these aren't just plug-and-play meters. You know, these, some of these will be larger construction projects that will require excavation and all that, maybe even a change in a meter pit. So it could be, it will take some time to get them all installed, but we definitely will report with what the findings are.
Thank you.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
How much water does the city of Ashland produce today, drinking water?
Right now, it's about, we average somewhere between seven to eight million. Right now, it's, we, here recently, we've been doing about nine million gallons.
And if you know, how much does it cost to produce one gallon?
We don't have a good handle on that, actually. That's something that we, that we actually need to farm out. I mean, we could probably come up, finance could probably come up with, here's what your labor is, and here's what your chemicals are, but there's, you know.
But we're losing fifty, up to fifty percent.
Yes.
But we're not sure.
Yeah.
How much it costs to make it.
Yes.
Well, we've been doing that for years.
Yes.
You know, but this team has done a phenomenal job in, you know, looking at that and identifying what we can do, and this is a good shot at it.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mark.
Any other discussion or questions on this consent agenda?
I'd like to hear about item C. The Safety Action Plan and Safe Streets, the $200,000 deal with eighty percent transportation grant.
Yeah, he's coming up.
I'd like to know how we're spending this money.
Yeah, so item C is basically just process payment, it's pay application. For LJB has been continuing their work on data collection and data analysis, and the engineering department has been working on getting some of the information over to them, like they need information on streets that have signal lights in Ashland and those type of things.
I can't hear very well, but, thank you.
Okay. Well, with the eighty percent, I guess, from federal?
Right.
Yeah, it's eighty, eighty-twenty. Yeah, eighty-twenty, and city-based twenty.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, new business. Item A.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with King's Daughters and Sons, the Subrecipient of $30,272.74 from the Community Development Block Grant Program for the Parking Lot Repavement Project."
Some move. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item B.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Tri-State Construction for the King's Daughters and Sons Parking Lot Repaving Project in the Amount of $49,479 for the Department of Community and Economic Development, $30,272.74 to be paid from the Community Development Block Grant Funds, and $19,206.26 to be paid by King's Daughters and Sons."
Some move. Second.
First and the second, any discussion?
This is off their lot, but thank God that they started paving over by Krogers.
All right, we're standing on task. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Good point. All right, item C.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Approving Change Order Number Three, Final Adjusting Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and CTB, Inc. for the 17th Street City Hall Exterior Upgrades Project, Decreasing the Contract in the Amount of $995 and Extending the Completion Date to May 7th, 2025 for the Department of Engineering."
Some move.
Second.
Pretty nice to get a deduction for change.
I like this.
We need to talk a little bit about what we're going to do with that window pane above the, above the door.
Mm-hmm. Yes, just plain.
You know, whether we put City of Ashland, we need the address.
We're certainly going to put the address.
Address, for sure. But you might circulate some ideas about what you.
Is there any codes about having your address on a building?
I do not know.
Fire?
Do not know.
Well, it's funny, we're 1701 Greenup, but the police department is 201 17th Street.
Yeah, no. All right, we'll look into that. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item D.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute Amendment Number One in the Amount of $325,000 to the Professional Services Agreement between the City of Ashland and Hazen and Sawyer for Phase Two of the Lead and Copper Rule Program for the Department of Engineering."
Some move. Second.
Discussion?
Pretty good news, too.
Yes, and all of it is here. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item E.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting the Streamlined Public Housing Agency PHA Five-Year Plan July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2029, and One-Year Plan 2025 to Comply with Section 511 of the Quality Housing and Work Responsibility Act and the Ensuing HUD Requirements to Be Submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Office of Public and Indian Housing."
Some move.
Second. Is this pretty much the same what we do every five years?
Yes.
Okay.
Required five.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item F.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting the Revised City of Ashland Civil Rights Assurance Program Previously Adopted by Ordinance Number 115 Series of 2024."
Some move. Second. Can we have a civil rights coordinator, Mr. Wheeler? Were you allowed to do that?
Yeah, we're.
It's tongue-in-cheek.
We're mandated. It's just updating the contact person and the coordinator, is all it's doing.
Unnecessary.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item G.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Approving Change Order Number Six Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Mechanical Construction Company for the 26th Street Pump Station Rehabilitation Project, Increasing the Contract Time by 71 Calendar Days to April 22nd, 2025 for the Department of Engineering."
Some move.
Second. You know, there's like seventy-one days? I mean, you know, I'm sure there's some kind of contractual part of that.
Equipment estimate.
Yeah, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item H.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Public Transportation Grant Agreement Between the City of Ashland, Ashland Bus System and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for FY 2025 Capital State Match Contract Grant in the Amount of $37,992."
Some move.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item I.
Reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Accept a Donation of Three Go-Go E-Bikes from YPK Motorsports of Ashland, Valued at $4,650 for Use by the Ashland Police Department."
Some move.
Second.
We obviously need to get a thank you, Mr. Seaman, to the donor, it was well done.
Yeah, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item J.
The mayor requests the board's concurrence on the appointment of Darrell Smith to the Code Enforcement Board to fulfill the term of Yvonne Cubason until March 1, 2026.
Some move, and Mr. Smith's in the audience.
Yes.
Second.
Well, here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Herein. Very good.
Mayor, also, maybe appropriate to offer Yvonne Cubason a great thank you. She's done that code enforcement job for a while, and has been a chair and was a, was a great chair of that board.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I spoke to her, and you know, she kind of regrets that, you know, she needs to leave that post, but, you know, she'd been there a long time.
Did a great job.
Yep, great job. All right, moving on, item K.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute Amendment Number Two to the Professional Services Agreement Adopted by Ordinance Number 160 Series of 2023 Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Palmer Engineering for Professional Engineering Services for the Construction Inspection Construction Administration for the 13th Street to 18th Street Roadway Streetscape Improvements for the Department of Engineering in the Additional Amount of $50,000, increasing the total to $210.
I'm going to move to table items K, L, and M to the next meeting. This, this group's asking for $130,000 additional dollars for the engineering services provided for the downtown streetscape. The explanation, we all got a.
Yeah.
One paragraph explanation before the meeting. It's not sufficient. I don't know what the hourly rate is. I don't know why there should be any justification for any additional payment. I think we table it and give it consideration down the road.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a first and a second. That's for item K.
K, L, and M.
And M. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Let's see, we still need to do an executive?
Uh, very brief one, if we could have one for potential litigation.
Okay. All need a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Thanks for coming, folks.